Okay, good evening everyone. I'll call to order the common council meeting for the city of Milton on Tuesday, April 15th, 2014, at 7 o'clock PM. I'll ask for confirmation of the appropriate meeting notice.
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Milton Piglet Wiggly, and the Shawna Municipal Center.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to welcome citizens and address any questions or concerns that are not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I'll move on to Agenda Item 3, which is the swearing in of newly-elected officials, alderpersons.
Okay, if I can have the elected alderpersons, please stay on. Dave is correct, you may be seated. And have you all raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Linda Clark.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderperson.
Having been appointed to the office of Alderperson.
Swearing I will support.
Swearing I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
And faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of said office.
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, all of you. Thank you. The Kineak Gallery is now leaving.
This is cards night. You know, I got to share the priorities.
Onto Agenda Item 4 is the election of the common council president.
I make a motion that we nominate Anissa. Even though she's not here.
Are we able to nominate her without her being here to accept?
That's a call ahead. The Attorney Schreier.
Sure we can. I guess it's up to her later as to whether she wants to turn down. So that's the risk that we have, but I guess it's the same story. If you're not there, you stand at risk of being voted out.
Absolutely.
As if it gets volunteered.
I would like to nominate Don Bruink.
A second.
And do you accept?
I would accept if nominated.
Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, I will close the nominations for common council president. We have two nominations. Alderperson Bruink and Alderperson Welch. How would you like to do voting this evening?
Is voting required as there was a second for nomination?
Excuse me?
Would, as there was a second for the nomination for Alderman Verwink, would they have to vote on that? I'm Alderman Verwink, sorry.
Yes, still required to do the vote to their purpose. It's a two by two.
So we have the sticky notes.
They're the same size and everything. Whoa, that was hard doing.
They used to have index cards, but they have these here, so.
Budget cuts.
Folded half one time, and I'll come and collect those. We have two. State and motor style and moving notes appropriately. Thank you. We have one vote for Alderman Verwink. Two votes for Alderman Verwink. One vote for Alderman Welch. Third vote for Alderman Verwink. And a fourth vote for Alderman Verwink.
Alderman Verwink will serve as council president Verwink for the 2014-2015 term. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to switch seats now?
You have to elbow the mayor.
Yeah, all right. Item 5 is the approval of the consent agenda.
To approve the consent agenda.
Motion and a second to approve consent. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 6 is old business. Discussion and possible action regarding city of Milton's strategic plan development. Conceptual discussions of management team's SWOT analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As outlined in your packet, and I did print out hard copies because I apologize, the internet is having some challenges for us tonight. So if you were able to pull up the packet in advance, you'd be able to see, or if you were able to pull it up from the email that Clerk Hubbard had put out last week as part of our ongoing development of the city's strategic plan. I met with our city's management team, the department directors, and I identified from our perspective what we saw to be the city's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats in what is otherwise referred to as a general SWOT analysis. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you'd like me to quickly go through each of these, okay? And then quickly, but then also wanted to make sure that we got your input as to things that you saw that you'd like to add to that, subtract from that, comment on. And then so as we develop more of a comprehensive starting document prior to engaging the capital improvement plan development process, as well as seeking citizen input, to make sure that we were kind of starting from the same place, so to speak, with respect to where we felt the current conditions were in the city of Milton. Please also note that this SWOT analysis not only looked at the city government itself, but the city from a more holistic perspective. And so the strengths that were identified were active and committed elected officials. Many of you serve on various committees and commissions in addition to civic duties. You actively engage in fundraising efforts, projects, or committees or commissions that are aimed at making the city of Milton better. High levels of service are provided. There's many things that we do as a city government that far and away exceed what is normally expected from municipal service provisions. Examples that were cited like included brush pickup at residences. We are the only Rock County library that has opened seven days a week besides Hedberg. Volunteers, and a lot of projects that are city coordinated through volunteer efforts. You look at some of the projects that have happened over the last three years, what have been the Goodrich Square Splash Pad, the Crossridge Park Playground. Certainly, one of the more prolific ones that we have going on right now is the Veterans Park Memorial. A lot of positive engagement from our community, a lot of volunteerism, all aimed at making Milton better. We have a lot of nonprofit and private recreational opportunities in our city. The basic services are generally provided at a high quality. Internally, that interdepartmental communication was seen as a strength. It was seen as a strength from our city's management team that elected officials remain at a higher level. I think it's very, very unusual or very rare for you folks to want to get down into the operations of either the departments, you let the managers manage their departments. The relationships that exist between city government, our staff, elected officials, and the business community and residents are generally emphasize a strong sense of community and caring. The city's development process is strong, and as indicated in Crossroads Business Park and some of the successes that we've had there. There have been substantial efforts made in civic engagement. And I know that we emphasize efforts, that there are some things that I think that we do well in that regard, and the management team felt we do well, and some things that we need to improve on. That we have an adaptive and flexible council and staff. That's also potentially cited as a weakness depending on the perspective. The financial strength of the city. We do not use fund balance reserves for operations. We have a strong fund balance that is in excess of the 25% fiscal policy that was established by the council in the mid 2000s. Employee retention is seen as a strength. We have good elected official and management team employee relationships resulting in fiscal savings for taxpayers. That's cited by the health insurance plan changes that we were able to acquiesce with our two unions on in both 2011 and 2013. A number of grievances or number of employee complaints are generally minimal. And a strength was also cited in the analysis that wasn't cited the last time that we did our strategic plan, and that was improved facilities. That was identified as a weakness in 2008 when you last went over your strategic plan. And that dilapidating, small, or outdated facilities were identified as a weakness, they're now being seen as a strength. DPW building, a new police department, and city hall cited as examples. Flip over to page 2, weaknesses. And again, these are city management team perspectives. Budget discipline, and note that that's a different concept than budget maintenance. And that is from time to time, either staff or the councils gets ideas that were not planned for, not prepared for, and not budgeted for. And that doesn't mean that that's a bad thing, it just means that throughout the course of a year, we will shift, come up with ideas, and adapt, and then make a program or make an idea happen that maybe wasn't necessarily budgeted for. And again, that can be seen as a strength and a weakness. And so different examples that have been cited. In 2013, we did not budget for the planning of the Highway 26, Highway 59 corridor. However, we were able to negotiate with both of our work units, a healthcare plan administrator change that saved about $38,000, and then spent 20 of that to plan the Highway 26, Highway 59 corridor. So some administrators and some councils, you know, take the approach that, well, if we didn't budget for it, the event doesn't happen. You wait until it's budgeted for, and then you do it. And so that's not necessarily a bad thing, but it is going to be important that as we continue to budget tighter and tighter and get closer and closer to our levy limits, that each and every single idea, each and every plan that we present accurately describes what the funding source for that plan is going to be, and what it impacts, and how it impacts other operations. So if there's going to be something that you choose to do that we didn't budget for, it's going to be very important for our department directors and I to communicate to you, okay, that's okay, but because of how tight we budget now, if you choose to do this, then we won't do that. And so that everybody knows fully how we would go about our business. That's a good segue into the next component, a prioritization of projects. And that is a need for a stronger capital improvement plan. You'll see that later on in your agenda tonight. And so that your policy directions and the goals and objectives that you establish as a council clearly define and help establish what it is that you'd like to see us get accomplished. And it's important that our city's management team effectively communicate with you what the needs of each of the service providing departments are, to make sure that not only the equipment needs or the staffing needs are communicated, but how we intend to work with you and our community to appropriately find the funding sources to keep Milton affordable. Perceptions of business unfriendly, and this is a complaint that kind of goes back, I want to say several years ago, in the development and the redevelopment of the city's sign code. That dialogue is somewhat continued as, you know, various members of the business community will anecdotally come up to us and talk about concepts. I'm talking us, members of the city's management team, about the mobile businesses dialogue. And that discussion has a tendency to potentially present an unwelcoming environment to new businesses in this community, despite what are well-known as staff and council objectives to make sure that we are so. So just as much as that weakness says that, okay, well, that we hear that, we'll hear just as many praises from folks like Carl Markstedt, who will say, boy, that development process for my new project, that new building went very quickly. Retention of the management team and accounting staff. As I do with our city staff, the HR function of our city, we do an exceptional job of retaining high-quality line staff. We very, very rarely ever see a resignation in the public works department. We very rarely see a resignation in the police department among line staff. What we do see is turnover in the management team. And so as we look at that, what are the root causes for that? It's going to be important that I think we get a better handle and better analysis on that. Some of that was retirements, you know, police chiefs retired. But some of it is resignation. You know, clerk treasurer left to go take another job. Administrators leave to go take other jobs. And so accounting staff leave to take other jobs. And so I think it's important that we get a handle on that and understand that, because with the exception of Director Robinson, every member of the city's management team in their current position is with the city fewer than six years. If you look at the demographics of our employees and our line staff, the average tenure of an employee is about 11 or 12 years. Some of that is shaped in terms of averages by very long-tenured public works employees, who I equate them to almost like Supreme Court justices. Once appointed, they don't leave until death or good behavior or whatever. I mean, they're just there for a long time, and that's something the city should be very proud of, especially considering in Rock County that you are in such close proximity to the cities of Janesville and cities of Beloit, who financially potentially have the capacity to pay our employees better. You do not see our employees, what I would call, you know, kind of puddle jumping to the next bigger community for bigger pay or whatnot, and that the work environment and that working in Milton is a valued experience for them, and the compensation package is competitive enough for which they stay to retirement. We have to create that same kind of a process for the city's management team as well, in my opinion. The marketing and promotion of Milton is inconsistent. You'll hear, you'll see a little bit about this in the next four areas. Many attempts over the last probably 24 months, maybe even going all the way back to three years, the city's marketing and branding committee, the tourism development commission, all those sorts of things, like while we're making some considerable progress, and hopefully now with a new logo and a new brand developed, that we will be able to consistently push out the message of what it is that Milton is, and what it is that we want to promote to people as a whole about our community. Whether that is, it's going to be a destination city, whether it's going to be a great community to raise a family, whatever that branding is, whatever that message is, it needs to be consistent. And I believe that, you know, the steps that you've taken to date should be built upon, given all the time and investment that you put into this logo, you put into this theme, that it be utilized to its fullest to make sure that the good story that Milton has to tell is told consistently and is told frequently in all of our ongoing efforts to create value. Tourism, I talked a little bit about that already. The strides have been made in the last year. However, the lack of a true definition and a clearly stated mission statement for the city's tourism and development committee, coupled with this limited budget, really kind of challenged that effort. A lot of the stuff that we're doing right now on the tourism development committee, I think, is good-hearted people getting together and learning more about tourism and trying to understand what it is that will attract people to this region. But I think if that is an area that the city continues to want to invest in to help our small businesses survive the impact of the Highway 26 bypass, a more clearly stated mission statement, either prioritize funding or a more regional approach will need to be looked at. Completion and sustainability, and this was something that, again, the management team and I identified, is that very often, sometimes we will start projects and they get going, and they get a lot of momentum and a lot of excitement, but at the same time, then we just don't quite finish them. And that's not necessarily the case, like, I'll use the good examples of what I think we've done well, is our building projects, you know, the DPW facility, the police department, city hall, those are good examples of things that we've done right, because we had a full budget, and the project and its expectations were clearly outlined, and where we wanted to be at the end was clearly defined at the beginning. Where there's been some limitations in that, and it's more so fiscally driven, is with some of our park development and some of our projects, we've done some great things, but we always haven't finished them. And so examples that have been cited were Liberty Park, where we got a $20,000 grant, a private group did that, they did the infield, and we talked about doing some things with, you know, leveling off the outfield and, you know, doing some other things, repairing a fence. But the negative impacts of levy limits, budget constraints, and the inability to just finish that project is kind of cited as something that we should take the very same approach that we use to our own capital improvement and our infrastructure to all the projects that we undertake. And that was just something that we had talked about. Committee direction, mission in congruence with the council. And this is something that I'm sure Brett can attest to. The mayor had to, you know, make appointments to over 14 different committees that fill 86 different slots on that sheet of paper that was handed out tonight. And I know from getting his texts and his emails that sometimes they were here till 11 or 12 o'clock at night, trying to figure all that out. At the same time, there's two different philosophies, and it's just really what you as a council want to adopt as to how you would want those committees to work. Some, and I would say that the city of Milton has more of this kind of a, what I call like grassroots-driven effort, where the committees and commissions are given an awful lot of latitude, and they kind of steer with citizen input and committee and commission member input, and make recommendations to the council about what they think they should do. I've also worked in communities, or seen it in communities, where the council themselves actually give the committee or commission specific direction. So I think as you lay out your strategic plan, you'll have to find out how you want to shape that. I think some of those things that we've done to date by giving those committees and commissions an awful lot of latitude have produced some exceptional results. Park developments, I was actually, in preparation for this document, it's probably not well-known because it's not well-publicized, but over the last three years, the city of Milton has invested more than a half a million dollars into its park system, between the Splash Pad, Crossridge Park Development, Veterans Park, and Liberty Field. And that's excluding all of the volunteer hours and privately fundraised dollars. So that's, those are considerable investments. I don't think there's any problem if you say, we want those, we want those groups to, you know, come up with the ideas, come up with the plans, come up with the funding sources, and have the council be an approving body. That's one way to do it. Or the other way to do it is for the council to direct the Parks and Rec Commission, or to direct, you know, the various, the Historic Preservation Commission, give them assignments, if you will, and say, hey, we would really like you to do this, or we would really like you to do that. And so it's really just kind of how you want to, you know, communicate your expectations as a council, and then to have those committees and commissions also communicate their expectations from you folks as the overseeing body of this government. And then external relationships. This was something that a couple of folks had brought up, and it's something that I hope that we're able to approve on, and that obviously, it's not been under-publicized, some of the challenges that we've had with the Department of Transportation or the Department of Revenue, and this is as much for me personally, seeing those unfunded mandates, seeing those challenges that we face as a city when the state comes out with something that we have to do, and they don't give us any money to do it. I think from my perspective, and this is probably as much me in the communications, is working to make sure that we preserve those relationships even in disagreement. Right now, I'm incredibly challenged with the Department of Transportation, as I know it's not any secret with some of our DOT access issues, the impact of the bypass. I know the mayor is actually calling a listening session for this Thursday night about a business 26 that, where I don't feel that they necessarily have engaged us as much as they could have or should have, or communicated as well as they could have or should have. And so moving forward strategically, the DOT and the DNR are not going away. The city of Milton's not going away. And so it's going to be important that even in disagreement, we preserve those external relationships, because just as it is important to publicize our disagreements, it's also important to publicize when we do things good in partnership together that benefit the city. And there have been examples of that as well. Opportunities, I'm trying to be as long-winded. Developing the city's two downtowns is certainly an opportunity into some destination locations. I had the opportunity this week to walk both downtowns and see the storefronts as part of what the council authorizes that Connect Communities Plan through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation. If you haven't done that, I would encourage all of you to do that if you can, if you can find the time, and actually just walk the downtowns, pull on those doors, see who's in there, see what those businesses are like. I think you get a really interesting perspective. I know I have a new one, from actually going into those businesses and knowing how hard those people are working to make their business work in Milton each and every day. Each one of them has a different story, each one of them had a different perspective, and each one of them had something unique that if marketed and promoted properly, could fit into the city's strategic plan of having people want to come to Milton to do more than just to live or work, you know, to actually see what we have to offer. So I think that's going to be certainly an opportunity for us going forward. Changing the zoning code to expand business and residential development opportunities. Over the last 18 months, you've annexed more than 300 acres of property into the city of Milton. So changing the zoning code to accommodate those new properties that have been annexed in, and to update the city's comprehensive plan to accommodate that responsible growth and development is an opportunity. Creating an inventory of larger homes. Not this Monday, but the Monday before, I spent three hours with a developer interested in possibly building upon and expanding upon the Pierce Farms Annexation. It was a project that he had looked at in 2007, and he made no promises, he just reinvigorated that conversation pursuant to our request. And one of the things he noted in the three-hour tour that we gave him of our city was that you don't have enough big houses. And so you've got some big houses, but you don't have quite enough big houses right now. And so if you want to be able to market to a person who's got that four or five-person family, you need to have an inventory of that product, just like we have to have land in the industrial park for economic development. We need to have that product to be able to sell, to be able to attract people to want to live in our city. Need to market our quality of life better. Milton is a very safe city, has got a lot to offer. It's got some outstanding educational opportunities, growing educational opportunities. We have an outstanding school system, and we feel that we need to do a better job of communication and the promotion of our community's assets. Again, a common theme of the opportunities portion in the discussion with our management team, the city of Milton has a great story to tell. We just need to tell it more, and we need to tell it better. Marketing and promotion of our community's events, Fourth of July, et cetera. Regionalism and cost-sharing opportunities. This was something that I think we realize is an economic reality, and as we do, although sometimes it can be challenging to establish those cooperative agreements, they really do serve as a benefit to all of our stakeholders. Example that was cited was the joint fire department. If we had to run a fire department on our own, that would be an over $700,000 budget expense, and because we do it jointly with another partner, we're able to cut those costs in half. I'm not saying that work is easy for those of you that serve on the fire commission, because I know it's not, but at the same time, that energy and that effort that you put into it allows us to provide a very high level of service at a substantially lesser cost to our residents. Crossroads Business Park was cited as an opportunity in that the development of the Highway 26, Highway 59 corridor is an asset that needs to be appropriately developed. The threats to the organization, levy limits, decreasing external revenue sources. It is no secret that each and every year, we are challenged in this room to develop an operational budget and service plan that meets the needs and the expectations of our business owners and our residents with declining help from external revenue sources. Interest revenue, state shared revenue, DOT transportation aid, all of those monies have been cut at least 15% since 2011, in some cases more. Our property values went from 383 million in 2005 to 335 million in 2012. That's over a 10% loss, and over $30 million of loss in property value. So we need to continue to sustain the government, we need to find external revenue sources beyond the tax levy, because the rules are that you cannot raise your taxes more than your equivalent of new construction. And unfortunately, because construction has been limited in Milton, although comparatively speaking, we are among the stronger economies in terms of the actual property loss to property value created in Rock County as defined by the Department of Revenue, we are still challenged by that. If the city and its government were a private business, you lost 15% of its value, and you said you couldn't raise your prices, government would have closed the doors. But we didn't do that. We sharpened our pencils, we worked with our employees, and, you know, we got a lot of things done. In fact, if you look at the historical perspective, we were able to, because of some of the ways that we went about our business and some of the tough decisions that each of you made in this room, were able to do things that, when you look back on paper, you'd say that, when I talk to my colleagues, they say that math doesn't make sense. You built a public works building, and you built a new city hall and a new police station. I said that's because we were able to reduce operational expenses each of those, you know, four years, in 11, 12, 13, and 14, to accommodate the new debt, take advantage of historically low interest costs, and at the same time, you know, comply with that 0% levy increase on operations, because we've reduced operational expenses each and every one of those three, four years, I should say. That's not sustainable. We are that leanly staffed, and as we annex 300 acres of property, area that's going to grow and develop and require, you know, municipal services, cannot continue to lean out each of our service providing departments. I was at the last Wisconsin City Managers Conference, they asked, they said, what do you think the most important job that administrators or city managers have today? And every one of them, myself included, said, creating value in our city. There's no more important job than we have than creating value in our city, because we can manage the operations and the expenses and the revenues that come in, but knowing that the operational expenses are going to continue to increase, and our ability to tax does not. And, you know, it's either services, people, or create value. And obviously, creating value is the most optimal of those choices. External factors, increasing the government's operation costs was cited as a threat, healthcare and utility costs, tax rate, keeping Milton affordable and competitive in economic development. Our Crossroads Business Park, the city of Milton, we compete in a global economy. We need to keep our tax rate affordable if we are to track residential development and business development in the city of Milton. Highway 26 bypass is identified obviously as a threat, and was also seen, cited as an opportunity. The absence of frequent and consistent activities, and this is going to sound strange, but the marketing and promotion of Milton. Anyone who's ever been in Milton on a Saturday morning in the fall or the spring, when all of those Cokeri- of those co-curriculars are going on, there's a lot of stuff going on, but we don't consistently promote it. We don't leverage the number of people that come into this city, and how do we get them? As a conversation I had with the mayor right before our start of meetings tonight is, how do we get those thousands of people that come every Saturday to watch their sons and their daughters and their grandkids play a game? How do we get them to spend a few more hours and a few more dollars in the city? I think we need to do a better job of promoting those events, and so that when people are coming here, that they're also, those events are supplemented by information, they're supplemented by a push from our business community to come and stay and do business in Milton, because the people come to Milton. There's no doubt about that. The issue is getting them to stay here and engage in commerce when they're here. That was cited in the absence of marketing as also a threat. Demand for services exceeds revenues to pay for them, that was cited as a possible threat. The instability and uncertainty in federal and state funding and mandates. I had a conversation yesterday afternoon with our third-party health insurance consultant, our folks from over at Tricor. I asked them, "Where are we at on this, you know, nationalized, you know, healthcare and all of that stuff that goes along with that?" And I said, "I wish I had better answers for you, Jerry, but even we don't know." And those are people who do it for a full-time living. So, I mean, we're still getting more information on that, but the instability and the uncertainty in federal and state funding, we have to be flexible enough, and that's, you know, seen as a threat, to be able to adapt and respond as we did back in 2011, when the substantial cuts to state shared revenue were made. The challenge for us in that, of course, is that we're so lean right now, that if another hit like that comes, it's going to substantially change the level of services we're able to provide in government. Tourism, and this was seen as a threat, and the lack of trained and professional staff to organize and coordinate tourist activity should be an objective, if it is the desire of this council for Milton to be a destination city. Again, we have great people on that committee who are committed to doing good things, but none of them have experience as a tourism professional. None of us know. And so, we go to conferences, and we learn, and we try to pick up as much as we can, but in cities of larger sizes, who we often compete against, they actually have tourism directors, and that's what we're up against. I talked about the failure to leverage the co-curricular activity going on into business activity, and a sense of focus in the role of government. What I mean by that, and it was talked about, again, in our management team, was that Milton really engages its business community and has a very active role in trying to make sure that all of our community assets can be successful. And so, in some cases, because of declining revenue sources, we've had to evolve what that role will or won't be with respect to government and funding. And so, there are certain things that the government is built to do, and we do well, and there are maybe some things that maybe we shouldn't do and should leave to the private sector. And so, in discussions that we had, you know, certain kinds of things that, as you develop this plan, as you establish your priorities, your goals and objectives as a council, there may be some things that you suggest to say, "Hey, you know what? We just don't want to or can't afford to have city staff be involved in that, at that level anymore." That's a concept known as a purposeful abandonment, or transition. For those that remember, in 2008, we were giving the chamber a substantial amount of money to do economic development for us. And over the course of time, because of limits that were placed and drastic reductions in our revenue sources, we've had to substantially scale that back, all the way to bringing that back in-house to a city-controlled dollars. And so, there are certain things that you might say that, "That's the role that we want for government," and there are going to be maybe certain things that you suggest that maybe you don't want to be involved in certain things as well. And so, identifying those and defining those will be very beneficial to staff moving forward. That's staff perspective. I'd be interested in hearing what council perspectives are on some of these, if you agree, disagree, if there are additional ones that you have that you think are important for us to focus on. I don't expect you to give all the answers tonight, but if you have ones that you'd like to talk about now that we could jot down in notes, we can do that.
I think there are certain things that you hit that are right on. I think we could do more to promote our city. I mean, you know, we probably, I mean, I've recruited a couple daycares from Oregon and Stoughton to come down to our Splash Park this summer. They're going to come down and use our park. They've been going to Janesville, so I've run into them as I've been teaching. So, I think it'd be good for us to have a list of businesses down there by the Splash Park for people that come from outside, because we get people from Whitewater, Fort Atkinson coming, and they're not even sure what everything we have here in town. Maybe they would go to some of our businesses if we promote them at our Splash Park, at least have a list of things that they could go to there.
We have a tourism kiosk that is in dire need of repair, that's at the other end of the park. What if you put it closer to where the Splash Park was and put some money into it?
Because I'm telling these daycare people that, you know, we have the Charming Bees, and we have a couple clothing, or like stores, secondhand stores, that are right there, you know, that, you know, if your parents drive them down, whatever, that there would be those opportunities. And I think we need to promote that to go along with it. So, that's something. I also think you could invent, you know, utilizing our parks better, we could find people to promote running. Other communities run softball, baseball, soccer tournaments, big tournaments for a weekend. Hire someone to do that, give them use of the parks, coordinate them that they do promotions with our local businesses, brings people into town. And I think, you know, we can't do it, because we obviously don't have the staff, but I think you can hire people to do that, and talk to the businesses, and give them a percentage, you know, they charge fees, give them something for profit, you know, to make money on it. Other communities do it. And so, I think that's something we could promote. I think it would be important even to look at an event, get an event specialist in. I think really Milton could, we could do something every month to promote this city. I look at other cities, and I know, you know, we're smaller, but there are, every, you know, there's certain weekend every month, we could do something. We already have some things, but we could add some things, but we can't do it, because we don't have the staff. But maybe there's event promoters out there that would do that for a fee, and look at what is feasible for us to do. And all of that, anytime we can bring traffic in, because that's a problem, bring this traffic in, and I think if we could find people like that, in fact, I'm even thinking about looking someone to organize a couple softball tournaments. I think I got a person that might be able to do that, because we certainly have the field. I hate to see them sit empty when we have them, and you can bring in, I mean, we used to bring in, there would be weekend tournaments, I'd see thirty-two teams come in, you know, and then if we can set that up and promote our restaurants, our bars with that, I certainly think that would be a big plus. I mean, that's what I would like to see.
So, you're leaning toward hiring someone separate?
We have to hire, we have to hire it, right.
And under whose umbrella would that be?
Well, I mean, that's something, that's up for discussion. We can't do it. We don't have the people to do it, but we can find people that are in the business to do this and promote our city. I mean, it wouldn't hurt to have a discussion with them.
Even Van Calderbus has small destination tours that, whether we can be part of it, it'd be, you know, a start.
And when the summer comes, I would certainly entertain, if we can't do it this year, to look for some people to do something like that next year, because I run, in traveling, I ran into these things where communities hire these people to get this done for them.
Other thoughts?
I'm looking at the weaknesses of our station projects and the capital improvement plan. I think really, with the major capital projects, we've done a good job, starting with DBW, and not doing anything until that was done, and then starting on police. We got watered down a little bit when we started talking about the library and city all move and everything, instead of just concentrating on the police department, getting at, it gets worked out okay, but it could have been a major barrier for us. We just hated by it now. Still going to get your department involved.
And I'm familiar with the process of having each department work within a living document, so that they all have a five-year living document that they have worked to put together a plan, but because it's a living document, it's a temporary plan that they are continually modifying as they work, that the first year is pretty solid, but the four years behind it are planned, and then as they continue to move forward, they continue to adjust that plan, but it forces them to continue to prioritize those projects. And you have beside them, you have public works, you have all the departments, so that you're continuing to look at, if, you know, public works has some really large, expensive projects on the mound for fifteen, sixteen, and this area is lower, and you can have the departments working together and making sure that no one's up for any big surprises as you move along.
Yeah, which is an excellent segue to our next agenda item, because there are some really major things that face us.
Which is part of, yes, right there. I know what you're, but it's also something to them thinking, rather than not just getting someone outside.
Sure.
But having all of them planning it.
Yeah, and this is a good discussion, because this goes into a territory that we've never, at least during my term of employment, gone here. Does the council feel that there would be value in having each of the departments have kind of a five-year strategic plan for themselves? So, Chief Labor, Chief Libincott, Director Robinson, Clerk Ebert, they'd have to say, "Okay, where do you see police services in 2020? Where do you see public works services in 2020? What are the most important things that you want to get accomplished in the next five years in terms of providing services?" Because that's something we could do in cohort with the development of the capital improvement plan by department.
And then, also, that addresses in our weaknesses, the budget discipline and the prioritization of projects also, because that way, we don't have those surprise occasions that come.
Well, I mean, there are things that do come up, I don't tell them.
Right, but we would stay more focused on what these things are, and I think that that's going to help the council a lot better with the budgeting. And then...
The marketing item, does anybody know that, a TV ad that the business has put together? It's a good ad. Does anybody know what that costs?
A lot more than what they're budgeted.
Oh, it was done privately.
Well, I'm just interested, I think we could do the same thing, without promoting businesses, promoting our parks, our, you know, pictures of the chicken barbecue, the Splash Park, the baseball tournaments and that, we could put something together like that to show the activities that go on throughout the summer, or the winter.
Yeah, the city's Tourism Development Committee got quotes from Charter for a community commercial, and I'll have Inga look those up. I was not at that meeting when they discussed it, but I will find out.
That was also in combination with some website advertisement, and that was in the eighties, in order to accomplish both of those things, which, but it was in, the demonstration and the information that Charter gave us was just incredible. It was, the marketing of that would have taken you a while. And one of the things that I wanted to mention, too, for the opportunities, we have created an inventory of larger homes, but I know of situations in the city where we have single parents that don't have housing that's affordable for them, and they're looking for three-bedroom homes, because they have a son, a daughter, and they're living with their mom, or a son and daughter living with their dad, where they need to have that. And in looking at the, even the multifamily housing that we have in the city, there are no three bedrooms, and if there are, they're few and far between. So, that was one of the opportunities that I felt that, along with the inventory of larger homes, that I think that we need to focus on that, too, especially because we have the school district that we do. We have a lot of people that want to live here to bring their kids to school, and unfortunately, if a marriage falls apart, you know, both of those people would like to stay in town, I'm sure. And then, the other thing, I just kind of wanted to go off of what Don had mentioned with the sports tournaments and that. I think that one of the things that we need to do is work specifically in, with the schools and also with these private organizations, the softball association, the soccer association, and so on, as a group, just like what we do with our Joint Fire Commission, because I just feel like if we had a consistent communication and a consistent scheduling of events, then if you have that organized sports, and you have that chamber representative there, you have that school person there, I just feel like it would be a lot more successful. And then, you know, we all can't say enough about the signing, because of the bypass. That signing off of Highway 26 coming into Milton, where the sign on Exit 6 says Harmony Town Hall Road, I think that we need to push to get Milton on that sign also, in both
Any additional input on the SWOT analysis? Okay, Jerry, can you talk briefly about the next steps in this process?
Bet. What I will do is I will take this input from you, and then incorporate that into the master document, and then I will have this back on the agenda for the May 4 meeting, and ask you which particular objective that you would like to tackle first from the four strategic areas that we talked about, that include fiscal integrity, include civic engagement, solutions, and sustainability. And so, solutions and services are tied directly to each other, so I'll ask you which one that you want to tackle first, and then what sorts of goals and objectives you'd like to see from that area as measurables. I'll give that back to the department managers to work on for a couple of months, and then come back and bring it back to you with essentially kind of your marching orders. And throughout that couple of months while they're working on it, we'd have a listening session for whatever that categorical area that you choose to work on. So, let's say, for example, fiscal integrity is the area that you choose to work on. And so, you say, "Okay, how do we measure it? How do we measure that in the fire department, in the public works department, in the police department up at city hall? How do we measure that? And what are going to be the goals and objectives that you establish for that particular categorical area, that you can see what it is that you want to have happen is met?" And so, fiscal integrity is, we're going to maintain our 25% fund balance, we're going to maintain our A1 bond rating, and, you know, whatever else it may be, that you define those expectations, and then that they're translated into goals and objectives in the interim while that's being vetted out by the departments. We have a listening session to find out what that means to our public, and then from there, we actually incorporate that into the final document. So, you're going to see this kind of as an ongoing agenda item in future meetings, and we'll try to tackle it kind of piece by piece, so that by the time budget time comes around in October, we'll have a completed document.
Any discussion on that from the council?
All right, we'll move on to Item B, which is discussion and possible action, reviewing quotes for capital improvement plan and financial modeling plan.
Thank you, Mary. This is a follow-up from our last regularly scheduled council meeting. We're two very good and comprehensive proposals were set forth by the firms of Baxter and Woodman, which is our engineering firm, and Rukert Milke, which was a firm that I had seen do a presentation on capital improvement planning at the Wisconsin City Managers Conference in Wausau in March. From a staff perspective, both firms are equally qualified, both firms, I think, would do a very good job. There are some differences, if you read their work, and you look at their work, and you look at what they did, and there are some cost differences. Baxter and Woodman, I think, has done an exceptional job for us as city engineers. The majority of their capital improvement planning process is specifically related to larger cost items in engineering, and so, you know, street projects, utility infrastructure, all of those things, I think, you know, that they've done a great job. And then, the examples that were forwarded to you, the special areas of focus and emphasis were placed in that area. And realistically, if you look at our overall budget, that's probably represent what some of the more expensive capital projects that we have are directly related to utility and city infrastructure. Those are the biggest numbers. The Rukert Milke approach, and again, I said I was extremely impressed with what they put together in the presentation at the Wisconsin City Managers Conference, and that was primarily because it took a much more holistic approach. It looked not only at utilities and infrastructure, but it looked at incorporating police cars and fire trucks, and really having the department directors work together and then establish those priorities, as to say, "Okay, if we know that we're going to fix this street, and we have to buy a fire truck, and we have to buy..." and we have to buy a fire truck and we have to buy a police car that same year, how do we stagger those out? How do we put all that together into one plan? As all the person Ruze said, kind of that living document that it's going to change. I mean, some years we've had plans where we're only going to buy one police car, the chief comes in and says, hey, these Dodges are killing us, they're doing bad, we need to buy two of them. And so that level of flexibility to adapt and to adopt a new plan and to adjust the plan is an important piece to our flexibility. It's a sign of our fiscal strength. But having that plan to serve as kind of the guiding document, because it's it's one thing for all of us as department managers to write down, hey, I'm going to need a fire truck in 2016, I'm going to need a new building in 2017, I'm going to need two new police cars, I'm going to need a new snow blower, I'm going to need this, and just put pencil to paper and plug that in. We could do that. We don't have to hire anybody to help us do that. Our talent is strong enough to be able to do that. But how does that integrate into the city's financial management plan, the operations of the department? How do those things balance out? So that's why, because these decisions are multimillion-dollar decisions for the city going forward, whether it be Parkview Drive and the four and a half million dollars at streetscape and utility work that's going to go there, a four, five, or six million dollar fire station, the fire trucks that are needed, for those of you that are on the fire commission, you read Chief Lippincott's, you know, capital needs, they don't get less. And so how do those operational capital needs, is what I refer to them as, match up and up against what the capital and infrastructure needs for the city are, its roads, its its utility infrastructure? And so blending those together with the financial management proposal from Ellers that we received, I feel that that the strongest cited example of how to best do that came from Rukert Milke. But again, there's a $5,000 cost difference there, and so it's really up to you as to whichever group that you felt strongest with.
You, you know, both companies have done a great job, as you said, in presenting all of their work and how they put it together, what they present, but you are the ones that have to use it and have to work from the information that they present and make decisions with it. If you had to choose one, what would it be?
Are you asking me or our staff members?
I guess if you had to speak for them.
I personally would would suggest that I think the city would do better with Rukert Milke, and I'll tell you why, is because it's an independent assessment of of our current situation. And as we look to develop the strategic plan, I'm somebody who likes to challenge that existing system and say, why do we do what we do? And so a fresh set of eyes on that, I think, would be very beneficial for us in that regard. I don't like saying that from the cost perspective of it being $5,000 more, and because I know how hard our department managers work to fight for that $5,000, I think that, yeah, I would understand their perspective if they said, save the $5,000 bucks, Jerry. But I will tell you that the decisions here are so critically important, and if somebody comes in and takes a look at it, I use the example of, you know, we had great work and exceptional work from County De Kemper, our treasurer. We bring in an interim treasurer, and in a month, he sees where we can save $23,000 in interest costs, because it's a different perspective, it's a different set of eyes looking at that. And so if a new fresh set of eyes looking at what we do and why we do it that way has us do something a little bit different, I'm fairly confident we'll get that $5,000 back. So in that regard, I just feel like anytime that we've had an independent assessment of why we do what we do and then have those people help us and guide us and create this roadmap for us that with, you know, your policy direction and their financial expertise and their capital improvement planning, Bondewell is a smaller city than us, and I talked to their director of operations, who's also their public works director, and he said, you know, this really helped educate the community, it helped educate our elected officials, it just helped us plan better, which helped us be able to do more and do it better. And that's a community that's probably about half our size. And so in that regard, I mean, it's it's not going to be an easy process, but I think one that's going to provide great value to us going forward.
When Nancy and I were talking before the council started, we were talking about this, and what you're saying is exactly what we thought, having a fresh...
Fresh perspective sees things. You walk in and you say, why are you doing that? And in that light, maybe you could share with them, they better do $5,000 better a job, but the the perspective is better, or excuse me, having a fresh perspective, I recommend.
I agree with that. A fresh perspective is what works the best.
I'm going to make a motion that we go with the Rukert Milke proposal.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jerry, can you quickly talk about the funding for this?
Bet. What we would end up doing is we would take funding from essentially five different sources. They would come from a certain percentage from the utility budgets, a certain percentage from the TIF budgets, and then a certain percentage from the city's contingency fund. Because I'll be working with interim treasurer Dan Nelson to break that down, because it'll be a total cost of $25,000 for these work to be done. An estimated, you know, probably, I'm going to say 50% of it would come from the TIFs, and the other 12,000 would come from utilities and the general fund.
Okay, and then also contained, this is the financial modeling plan?
Right.
Okay, is that...
Yep, and that's it, that's included in that. The it's about nine, I believe, the it was in the last agenda, it was $9,800 from Ellers.
That's represented. Yes? Okay, any any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item 6C is discussion and possible action on Crossroads Business Park Realtor RFP.
Thank you, Mayor. The council did authorize us to send out an RFP in March of 2014. This was a recommendation from the city's Economic Development Commission for an exclusive Realtor, an agency or agent that would be able to market properties in the Crossroads Business Park, specifically commercial and retail properties along the Highway 26, Highway 59 corridor. The city received one response to that RFP. It was from McGuire, Mears &amp; Associates. A copy of that proposal was sent electronically, and then, as requested in the RFP process, hard copies are provided for your review. If you look at their work and their references, both are substantial and considerable with respect to what they've been able to accomplish, not only in the city of Milton, but throughout the region. And staff's recommendation would be to accept their proposal to serve as the exclusive Realtor to market the properties in the Crossroads Business Park.
Discussion?
How far out can he go? As far as outside of Wisconsin, or are we still limited?
Jerry, do you know if they're licensed to practice real estate in Illinois?
I do not.
I would assume that the internet would even that playing field.
I do know that Mr. Mears, from the proposal, markets on CoStar, which is a national company. So he does put his listings onto that particular website.
Thoughts?
I was able to read this tonight before I came, because I was able to get on and read through it. And, I mean, I, the people that they worked for and who they had, I thought was kind of an impressive list.
Right.
Some of them are major chains from five different states or six different states, so they are much more than just the local area.
Right.
So I think that if we liked the proposal, I think it would at least to go with them for a year and see what happens with them.
Do you have discussion, Jerry, with them regarding who would be our primary point of contact on this?
I have not, no.
And who submitted this, or who did you contact that you received this?
Bill Mears called me Friday and sent a follow-up email to make sure that we got the documents. They came in the mail late Friday afternoon. The deadline was Friday at 4:00, which is why Michelle had to resend them out electronically with the packet. It was the only proposal that we received. However, I do feel that given some of the development work that they've been associated with, particularly in the city of Janesville, as well as those not familiar with, they are the property owners in the Blackhawk Technical College Development Project.
Well, I just think it's important we don't drag our feet because we need to get something going. We should, and we should, so we, I think we should try them a year, see what they do for us. We can always reevaluate in another year. But the weather's getting there where, you know, people are going to start to build, and we want to be part of that, and they seem to have a lot of clients that are regional within, you know, the three, four, five state area.
Right.
We have a we have a bypass that's perfect for some of the businesses that they deal with. Maybe that would help us get something started. I think it's, you know, and if we start getting something started, Hotel, you know, I mean, I'd see some restaurants go out there. Hotel might say, hey, we got, there's some restaurants here, now we have a location. So I think I think it's important tonight that we maybe accept their proposal since they've got one for us and like it. I liked it anyway, looking at it. I don't want to speak for everybody else.
I make a motion that we accept Caldwell, Mears, McGuire, Mears &amp; Associates to market our product.
For and for a time length?
For for one year.
We have a motion and a second to work with Caldwell Banker Commercial, McGuire, Mears for a period of one year to exclusively market our Crossroads Business Park properties. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add one point, and that would be that what I would intend to do is communicate with Mr. Mears that they were the selected firm, and then bring back a listing contract for the council to consider improvement at its next meeting.
Yep.
If they would like to present what they're going to do for us also would be nice.
Okay, I will ask them to come.
It would probably, we would probably be best served with an exclusive agency agreement as opposed to a listing contract to begin with, because we haven't set pricing or parameters, but we can set up that basic agreement.
Do we have to make a, or do you have a motion that would include all of that?
Or is that just separate?
I have, as in a separate agenda item, it'll come back next month.
Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 7A is discussion and possible action regarding the mayor's appointments to council committees. I will give the little speech app for this. As Jerry indicated, this is something that I've worked reasonably hard on, as hard as is appropriate. These are important appointments. I was here late many nights, not because it's a difficult task to find good people to fill these committees, but because there are six good people to fill every spot on these committees. And so I went through several revisions, trying to not make change for the sake of change, trying to put people where I thought their energy, their passion, their interests, and their talents would be best utilized, and then trying to make it as even as possible with who had the number of committee assignments, not wanting anyone to to burn out on this. So...
And did you contact anybody to find out if they had any personal conflicts with things?
I did have contact with several people. I did not contact everyone. I was advised about the the fire commission that sometimes those are the breaks of getting elected, is that you find yourself on Wednesday meetings or additional meetings. But, you know, this is what I feel represents a very strong slate of committee appointments. Certainly, there are people on the council who could serve on every one of these committees and do a very good job. That's not realistic. So I would humbly ask for your confirmation of my appointments to the city committees.
I would like to have some discussion on that, but, you know, that would make it a next month for, or, you know, a future decision.
I was going to make a motion that we set the committee and commission appointments, which is the council committees.
Yep, council committees. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
Have we had anybody that has put in any applications for the historic...
That's on the next agenda item, but no, I have not had anyone come forward. Some some interest, but but nothing concrete.
We had one, we had posted, we had one before we had to post it.
Right.
So in that time.
But on specifically the city committees, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Item B is discussion and possible action regarding my appointments to boards and commissions. Again, this is where we get into the weeds a little bit, where there's lots and lots of names that show up lots and lots of times. Fortunately, with those 14 committees and commissions, I think that this represents a very strong slate. These commissions include Parks and Recs, Plan Commission, Tourism, our Zoning Board of Appeals, some pretty important facets of our government that all have to work in concert to make the city work. I worked on this equally as hard as the committee appointments, and I would ask for the council's confirmation. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. On that point, I did want to point out that we did have a couple of new citizen appointments that are of particular interest on tourism. I am proud to say that Cory Olson has agreed to serve as a voting member of the Tourism Development Commission. She's been on many committees before, but always as a non-voting representative, and certainly as our city looks to promote tourism, the Milton House should be a meaningful component of that, and her input and insights are very valuable. The second I'm very excited about is the addition of Mary Ellen Van Valen to our city's Economic Development Commission. She is the, what's her title, the business manager?
Director of Business Services.
Director of Business Services for the school district, our city's largest employer. I believe the budget is $37 million a year, something like that. Certainly, it's important to have someone who's used to dealing with those numbers. Equally important is that the school district taxes, just as much as anything, have a direct bearing on our city's ability to attract economic development projects. So I'm excited to point out those two new additions in addition to the rest. Move on to item eight, which is general items. Our next meeting is Tuesday, May 6, 2014. Any other persons' reports? All right. Mayor's reports, I have I have a few things. First of all, the 59 access, there has been not movement, but there has been a small development in that we had already had a meeting scheduled for May 1st with Secretary Gottlieb. Jerry received a call the other day, communication the other day, that Joe Olson and the new regional director would like to come down and meet with us ahead of that meeting to discuss this issue. I would say I was, I'm hopeful, but at this point, I'm not ready to make that judgment. Second, we have drafted, I have drafted a letter to the governor asking for him to essentially by his own action overrule the administrative code that the committee has used to disallow this access point. We feel it is important to the city of Milton, but we also feel that access, holding up economic development, is in direct conflict with the Wisconsin is Open for Business and government not hindering business development that our state government has talked quite a bit about the last four years. That letter will be going out tomorrow to the governor, and I will keep you all apprised of what the response is. Second, on a similar topic, I will be hosting the bypass listening session. We got a call last week that the Gazette wanted to cover this, which would help get the word out about the listening session, and so planned that right away. I apologize, I couldn't give more notice, but we didn't realize it was going to be in the paper that early and wanted to get good turnout. It's obviously a very important topic for our city. A lot of our businesses are suffering poorly. Some of our businesses and residents on our west side are noting traffic concerns, safety concerns, as a result of traffic that has increased quite a bit on John Paul Road, not to mention Parkview Drive. There are many unintended consequences of this bypass, and we're hopeful that the state will work with us to to remedy those, including a more direct access to the city of Milton. Since our last meeting, the Chamber of Commerce has unanimously endorsed the pursuit of a business access to the city of Milton, and so I'm happy to report that to you.
Can I just bring up one?
Yep, go ahead.
Before you draft a letter to the governor, I just have one concern in that, I know in a school setting, maybe it's different here, but when there was something that was not... not right, you know, I always went to my next supervisor first, then the next one, before you would go jump hoops.
Right.
Don't you think it'd be better to wait with the letter to the governor until you meet with the DOT to see if you can rectify anything first? Because I'm just concerned if we work with them in the future. I mean, I wish I knew why they were not pursuing it, but if, you know, of, like if we want the access, is it going to cause a backup on the road? You know, like if we say we want to change where the traffic comes in?
Right.
What's going to happen if there's a lot of businesses developed?
Right.
We make that change and traffic backs up on the highway? Is that why they're holding back and not on changing things? I mean, I just guess, I don't know. Teresa, you've been in school. Do you think it's good to jump hoops before you actually talk to the people that, you know? And I guess that's a concern. I don't think it's a bad idea if we don't get any kind of change, you know? I mean, I'm just looking at potentially working with them in the future on different things.
We could certainly delay it.
I guess that's, that's my view. I mean, that's just one person in my view. And I guess I want to...
You're going to sign it out the day after the meeting if it doesn't?
Yeah. I guess, you know, I mean, I've always worked through the proper way to do things.
Right.
Chain of command. I think it's important you do that. And I just, that's my advice.
Jerry? I can give a little bit of perspective on this and some conversations that I've had with other economic development professionals in the area as to why I think the mayor's idea of sending it out now is a good idea, and it's indicative of an unfortunate time in Madison. Certainly, Representative Jorgensen and Senator Cullen have done a great job for us in terms of DOT. However, unfortunately, their partisan and political affiliation sometimes is stonewalled by the opposite side of the aisle. And so, given the conversation that I had with the developer last week and how they felt about how the end users of those prospective projects felt about this restricted access and essentially, unfortunately, time kills deals in economic development, meaning that if those, you know, those end users are looking at, you know, four or five different projects and their budgets, you know, have the ability to maybe only get one or two of them done. And if the Milton project is kind of falling by the wayside because of this access restriction, our fear is, and I think I speak for the mayor on this, our fear is, is that maybe they do their project in another community in 14 and don't do our project until 15 or 16, until this gets worked out. The, I agree with you completely, Alderman Verwink, in that the appropriate way to do this, if the relationships were stronger in Madison, would be to follow the proper chain of command. Unfortunately, sometimes politics gets in the way. And what happens is, is that even when a great idea comes from the other side of the aisle about an access restriction thing, and then somebody says, well, that's coming from so-and-so and so-and-so who happened to have a D behind their name instead of an R behind their name.
Right. I know Gottlieb was an assemblyman who was on the other side of the aisle.
Correct.
Versus our assemblyman. And that could work against us in that respect. So I understand that. I just, I guess I just had to view my, get my viewpoint and, you know, what you say makes sense, you know?
I normally would agree with you, and that's why we hadn't asked for a meeting with the secretary on this. That's why we hadn't. We first talked about the letter to the governor two or three weeks ago. That's why we hadn't done anything at this point. Now we've jumped up to that executive branch.
Well, I guess if it means, you know, the potential we have a chance to land the business, then I would agree.
Yep.
We're not going to do the business without this.
Right. And also on the staff side of it, just so you're aware of it, that we are putting some pressures on the developers to say, if we are able to get a meeting with the governor, we've got this meeting with the secretary, can we get letters of commitment from your projects to say that you will do this if we get the access fixed? That creates a win-win for Milton residents in the fact that if we work so hard to get the access through the different layers of government that we have to to get that change, that people will know those projects are definitely happening. Because if we're going to get, you know, the time and the energy from those people who are incredibly busy, I mean, they represent the entire state, we want to make sure we go with letters in hand that'll say, this is, we will do this if you get this access fixed.
Right. What I do appreciate is you telling us, so we can discuss it. Because then it's good to hear reasoning and have this discussion.
Just not tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I know, but I mean, it's just, I think it's important that we have dialogue.
The...
Mark Olson, let's put a damp...
Second to last, second to last topic is staffing of commissions. One of the topics that we had covered last, I guess we called last session, was expectations of staff and potential burnout on staff with meetings and late meetings and long days. So something that Jerry and I have talked about, it was, there's kind of a suggestion that we mutually came to, and I think it's a good one, is we are now staffing some of these commissions, Parks and Recreation, Historic Preservation. In many instances, we're staffing them with hourly employees, specifically INGA is who I'm thinking of. Knowing that we are so lean and knowing that we want those commissions to operate as efficiently as possible, it is going to be my recommendation, and I hope that everyone understands why I'm making it, that we staff those commissions for an hour. An hour of the meeting can have our staff there, and we'll discuss that and we'll report back to you what the structure is going to be. But sometimes those meetings have gone on for two hours, two and a half hours, and we have hourly employees there on a Tuesday night or Thursday night. That negatively impacts what they're able to get done and also negatively impacts, you know, things outside of this building, which, believe it or not, do exist. So it's my hope that folks understand that, but, you know, burnouts can happen at every level. And of course, our staff wants to help at these commissions. They want to be involved and invested, but an hour of staff time should certainly be sufficient. And if it's not, we can make a change. The last thing that I'll report to you is the press release that you have in front of you on the mayor for a day. We had previously discussed this. This is something that other communities do. I don't believe we've ever done it, and if we have, it certainly hasn't been in many, many years. Essentially, what the concept is, and we'll be working in partnership with the Courier, I got it. We'll be working in partnership with the Courier to publicize this locally, is an essay writing contest for elementary kids, grades K through six, asking them to submit and writing two answers to two questions. What do you like about living in the city of Milton? And what would you do to make Milton better? The winner, who is judged by the city's management team to have the best essay, the best answers, maybe the best drawings, maybe even ideas we can put into action, will be mayor for a day. They will, they'll get the full treatment. They'll get to sit on a management team meeting. They'll get to go see what policemen do, what public works guys do, the library staff, city hall staff. The six people who are judged to have the, you know, equally good, but, you know, just a little bit different essays will be the council for part of the day and will come here and be our counterparts for a meeting. We will have a pizza party for them at the conclusion of what will hopefully be a very brief meeting. Or we will all have sleepyheads next to us at the tables. And my hope is, is that this is the beginning of something that, as Jerry says in the press release here, that is another attempt, and hopefully a successful one, to engage the youth of our community in government and understanding what we do and just being a part of the city of Milton and the government. Someday, those kids will be responsible for the jobs that we're doing right now. And so I'm excited about this. This will go out tomorrow, but we wanted to show it to the council tonight and make sure you didn't have any questions or concerns. We can't have discussion here today, but if you do have concerns, please let Jerry know if there's things we can tweak, but our desire is to send it out tomorrow.
Are you going to let Mark be at the meeting, that meeting?
Mark will not be at that meeting? No.
He might bring up things that Mark says we can't discuss.
Discussion will be free range that day, no. Staff report, city administrator.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Wow. Director of Public Works.
All the public works department or bring stuff down there, any type of metal is good for that. Cemetery cleanup is tomorrow. Yard waste and brush go through the end of the month. The water running is officially over tonight for running or getting the discount. Some of the services in town actually unthought by themselves, so some of the frost is gone now. And let's see, summer schedule for the public works department starts next Monday. And let me think, that's the Veterans Park. They're going to be putting a water line tomorrow and probably electric this week too. So the volunteers are doing a lot of stuff up there.
Dick Frye camping out up there? I see him there when I drive by.
Him and Jared Groom.
He was happy. He's got a picnic table now, so.
I'm feeling there's going to be a lot more things added to that park eventually with the government.
Is that it? Okay. Chief of the police?
Nothing.
All right. Director of the library? Joint fire? City clerk?
Nothing.
City treasurer? Don't have one. Number nine? President Verwink?
Right. Consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to the Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. Reason, public nuisance abatement at 858-864-Parkview Drive.
That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Just a couple minute break.